Motion for the consent agenda?
All motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nate, do you need to go first?
Um.
Or do you have?
I've got time. I mean, I don't have to be over until 6:15.
Okay. They're not gonna start without you, right?
I would like to request that. I mean, I don't have to go next, but soon, because I have a Sheldon Board meeting at 6:00 that I want to try to get to.
And I have a couple guests here, too, so.
You think you can take your guests first?
Um, those guys go first?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
You're good, go ahead. So these guys are here just to give a quick update on Flexible Pathways Academy, which was the school within the school independent model that we were talking about kind of keeping with some of what we were trying to do with proficiencies last year. These are our two teachers of the academy, Maggie Vasos and Gabrielle Wondra. They just wanted to give you a little information about how they are reporting.
Sure.
So, quick update first on what they're shaping up for. We have about 10 students sign up at Power School for a full block in their schedule next year to do Flexible Pathways work. We've used that block to organize our evidence, reflect, gather further evidence, look for opportunities, as well as hoping they can help us do some actual program development, so get some student input on how can we build this program a little bit. And we're also hoping to attend some conferences with that next year. We also wanted to share with you, we have a website that's linked into the Enesberg Falls website. So, it's just a Google site. And I believe it's linked under Academics way at the bottom. So if you're looking for it on the school website, you'll go to that. I'm just going to go over the bottom. And that's something there. And then the last thing, which if you look on the next slide, we have proficiencies in equivalent proficiencies for all of the subject areas in both ways, like a standard foundational level, as well as an advanced category. And then we have verification guides for all of those, including the advanced ones. That's kind of our update. Then we also have some slides to share with you about our work with Mastery Transcript Consortium, who are our contacts that we're working with in terms of developing a transcript that will actually reflect this kind of path through high school, as opposed to the transcript from high school.
So, the last time that we talked to you guys, I don't think we had really done anything with Mastery Transcript yet. I went to Texas in January and met with lots. There were over 300 people there, and I'm not sure how many schools were represented. There's a lot of other schools piloting the Mastery Transcript in there. It's right now sort of in beta form, so we're playing around with it. And we've had some students playing around with it. Just wanted to update you where that is going, what, how we're participating with them. So, right now, we're working with the Mastery Transcript organization. And they are allowing us to use their software, so we have an example to show you. I wanted to make sure to share that they are working really closely with some higher ed people and collaborating with them. They have about 12 schools that they're working with right now. They're hoping to get to 25. There's a really good cross-section, so small schools, big schools, selective, non-selective, east coast, west coast, north, south. They've got a really good sort of cross-section of people that they're working with, so that's pretty encouraging. And, yeah, their feedback from those people has been positive so far. They shared specifically that those people are motivated to find new ways to look at achievement and that they're, you know, looking, they're especially interested in approaches that are more authentic and equitable. So, they're doing some good work with those people. They have a timeline of about three to five months. Their first two things that they're working on are optimizing the transcript for admissions, so admissions people can look at the transcript and really get the information that they need. And then also coordinating the online systems and how that information gets from one school to them. So, that's the three to five month timeline. And there's one person that's like in charge of this, and that's his main job, so he's working really closely with colleges. So, Kira Weatherwax has been working on a transcript. She's had a tough job because she's had to pull her work from, you know, freshman year to junior year and try to pull it together. It's not complete yet, but this is what she's been working on, making a sample transcript. And we just wanted to share with you what it looks like right now. It's pretty cool. It looks pretty cool. Kira wanted to share it herself, but she wasn't able to. So, this is the whole platform.
Just link that in landing page. Those parts allow us to put in our proficiencies, as well as interstudents and school data.
So, right now, all our master credits are in there. And then Kira's been working on coordinating. I'm gonna make this smaller, doesn't seem to have any idea. So I can see the whole thing. Is that it?
Yep.
There should be three tabs here, but yeah, that's not it. Sorry. I'm gonna work with this tab. Always, right?
Never fails, exactly.
Very true. Nobody knows how to get that back.
Is there, can you drag the corner? Like, if you push your screen over, can you drag the bottom right corner to shrink your whole screen? No, pull that, pull that screen over as far as you can. Over to the left, the other side. And then if you can, if you can get to where you could drag that bottom corner. I don't know if you can see your whole bottom corner.
Remote to view.
I'm thinking on the remote, you might have an option to.
Under view, can you use the zoom to zoom out function, Gabrielle? Keep going to the minus.
Try it again.
I think you're close.
We are close. It's right there.
It's right there.
All right, well. Oh, that's really sad, though. Can we drag the other side? Maybe pull the dongle out and get what you want on the screen in one second.
This is the solution that worked earlier.
Now there's an arrow. Oh my god. I feel like my name's every time, different every time.
Go.
Maybe I can share screenshots another time.
So, the really key thing about it is that it shows like featured things that she's done, like evidence and projects that she's worked on, and you can click on them and you can see the work. That was the page that was over on the left, just the overview page.
Bless you.
But the other thing that is kind of visible in the slide from the slideshow is the circles. And the circles, as well as they're using circles and then the box of mystery charts as well, to show the number of proficiencies that Kira has completed, both in comparison to the number she's able to complete total and in comparison to the average number completed by her cohort in school, which is based on the higher education really requested.
I mean, I guess you can see the credits.
This, in its proper form, has three sort of tabs, where the first is that overview page that has some featured credits, has if she's done any kind of micro credentials or if she's done any kind of, like, their condom case studies at the moment, but those big projects. And that first tab, as well as kind of a personal introduction to who she is as a student and as a person. And then this tab is the second one, so credits, in terms of when she's completed, things for review, et cetera. So you can see the foundational, and then the advanced over right there. So in each category, there are foundational things that she could complete, and then there's the advanced things that she can complete, and that'll show kind of briefly what she's done. And then there's a full-on transcript that lists like all of the classes that she's taken, stuff like that.
So all her credits, credits in progress. It also shows classes. There is a spot on here where classes show. So it can also show that. And then there's a transcript. They did just add something. They just opened it and they had added something, so. Well, that's a bummer, we'll keep you in the loop, guys.
Yeah, listen, I will send Eric some screenshots of what those means would like.
I think this work kind of tails off of some of the work that we had done in years past. And one of the big hangups for what we were doing previously with Lift and things of that nature was just not being able to represent that in a transcript form that would make sense for colleges. And their work is ongoing with this consortium that's trying to solve that problem right now. So that's why I think this is important for you guys to have some understanding of going forward, that if we do ever come back to a place where we're beginning, where we're phasing out, you know, letter grades and things of that nature again, that this would be the sort of thing that you'd be looking towards. That would make more sense for colleges and for kids.
Having said that, it's not really a Lift platform, like, it's not a work.
No, I'm not saying it's a Lift platform, it's just it's the transcript.
It doesn't really do the same thing, but.
So, that transcript that you just showed us is being utilized for the 10 kids that are in the Flexible Pathways.
So they have, they will have an option. So they're gonna create a transcript using this platform. And they will also have a Power School transcript if they choose to use it. The MTC organization has asked that we choose. So kids need to choose when they send to colleges, that they choose one or the other, not both. They can choose, like for Kira, she's gonna be a senior next year. So she may want to use Power School for the first three years. She may want to send two transcripts, but they won't be a mix.
Gotcha.
So she'd either do, you know, first three years Power School, last year MTC, or she will funnel everything into MTC, make it look really good, and send it as her final transcript.
Right.
She would also have the option to send her Power School transcript to schools who maybe are looking for more of a traditional transcript, and then the MTC one to schools that are looking for more flexible ones.
So these 10 kids will have lots of options.
How are the 10 kids, like, how do you choose the 10 kids for the program? Is it student?
They chose.
They chose. And so, and you cap it at 10, like, if you're full, you're full?
We didn't have it. Although Maggie and I were in this group about how much we can handle for next year.
Right, I get it. I just wanted to say.
10 is a good starting number, I think. To sort of get the flow of things and see. It's kind of a lot of work. I kind of wish Kira could have made it, because Kira spent a lot of time going through her work. Like, using evidence is harder than just getting a grade.
Right.
So it takes a lot more time to go through, reflect on it, and figure out how it matches with the verification guides.
I appreciate the work that you're doing on kind of a smaller scale than where we started last year to try to navigate through and find a way to be able to do this in a way that reflects the learning for the students in both the Mastery Transcript format and them having the ability to choose for some of those colleges and universities that are less willing at this point to accept something progressively different. So, I appreciate you guys kind of being on the forefront of doing this work. And, you know, I look at this as like an action research piece, where you're building it while you're doing it. So I appreciate what you're putting in.
Some safety nets.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, sorry for the technical difficulties.
No worries.
Thank you.
Just switch me and Lynn.
So, under personnel, I did have Joe Marceal, who I spoke with the ERUUSD Board about this, but just as a formality to let the Enesberg Board know as well. He had originally retired, and then he requested that we, that he be allowed to retract that retirement letter. Things changed in his life, and he would like to stay at Enesberg, so we're happy to have him stay. I think each of your principals is gonna give you an overview of their current, where they are in terms of hiring. And I'll ask you when they do that to just approve hiring, make motions to approve those hiring, those candidates, that would be good. I want to get at, I'm gonna have a little bit of time. We'll have to go into an executive session to talk about the principal candidate search. But let me go through the rest of this first. At the, two meetings ago, you asked me to take a look at options for coming up with language around leave requests for both support staff and teachers. And that request really came out of Enesberg, but if, as I was digging in and trying to do this work, it does not make sense to me to do this just for Enesberg. We try really hard to align our policies in the supervisory union. And what I would rather do is pull together a subcommittee to do this work this summer. I think it's important that the principals are at the table when we have conversations about, you know, what standard do we want to set for when we would approve an unpaid leave. I just think it makes sense to be a group larger than me doing this work. So I would like to table that and then come back to you, or come back to the SU Board, really, in the fall. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
The high school graduation, and Eric is probably gonna talk about this, too, but I just put it in as a placeholder. This is a reminder that it's Saturday, June 15th at 11:00. I know oftentimes, I know Amy's new to the board. The Enesberg Board members typically stand up there on the stage and hand out diplomas to the kids that they know.
It's representative of each town, isn't it?
Right, but Enesberg has generally had more than one.
Usually they stand in if a town is representative.
So we're getting names at each of our local board meetings right now, this month, to hand to, you know, Bakersfield, Board member would hand to Bakersfield, Berkshire would hand to Berkshire, and so on. Enesberg generally hands to the Enesberg kids, and if there's no one to hand to a student from another town. I know sometimes Fairfield doesn't have a board member there. We'll find out tonight if Sheldon will have someone there or not. But I just wanted to make sure you had that date in your calendar and you were aware. So did I, anything else that I missed in there?
Other than the speech that the new board member has to do.
Oh, yeah.
So funny.
Well, you welcome everybody.
In terms of the legislative update from Montpelier, they're wrapping up. We're hoping that their session is gonna end, we're hearing Sunday. There, I've sent you updates about the Act 46 pieces and the delay language. After the conference committee fell apart, not fell apart, they came to an impasse and then they disbanded. Senator Baruff attached his Senate amendment language to the special ed bill. I heard earlier today that it doesn't really appear that much is gonna happen with that bill in the next three or four days. I just think the two sides are not gonna agree on delay language, is what we're anticipating. I'll keep you updated if anything else comes out of the legislature. We expect that there are gonna be little pieces, and kind of thought this all along, that they're gonna attach it to the budget bill in the end. The things that are kind of necessary that they can agree on moving forward. So look for those updates possibly later in the week, if not, then by early next week, hopefully. Rick asked me to come back and give information about the ethnic studies bill, because he had questions I couldn't answer last time. So I pulled that one out, and it, the bill doesn't, it's not live next year. So what it has done is it's created an ethnic and social equity standards advisory working group to review standards for student performance that will hopefully be adopted by the state board. And their group is gonna hope to put something before the state board by June of 2021. So we have a little bit of time. So they're gonna make those recommendations about additional standards to recognize fully history contributions and perspectives of ethnic groups and social groups. And then the board will require by June 30th, 2022, that those, that they adopt those ethnic standards. So it would be school year '22, '23, when those standards would be kind of live for us. So I think that was the crux of Rick's question, was really trying to get at, how quickly is this, are these additional standards gonna be our responsibility in schools? So I think there's work from their study committee first before that, before that happens. Any questions on that?
Nope.
And you got a legislative update last week. Did anybody have a chance to tune into that, take a look? There's, there's still, I have, to be honest, I haven't read the drinking water piece as quickly as I should have, but I think that they're probably going to pass something about lead in the drinking water, testing for lead in the drinking water. And the last time that I had looked at this, they were still trying to figure out how they were gonna pay for that. So I think that that's where it's gonna land. They're gonna have to try to come to a place that both sides can agree upon in terms of who is gonna cover the costs. Is it gonna come out of your local money, or is it something that's gonna be paid for at the state level? So I know they're working on that. And was that a year-to-year test? Um, no. No. It was like, oh, and we had that done, yeah.
We counted our spigots.
So Enesberg Elementary and Richford Elementary both were in that pilot. There were 10 schools in the state last year who piloted this. The difference is the testing was free, but the mitigation had no support. So the mitigation landed completely on the local dollar last year. For this, there'll be money for mitigation as well. But it might be a 50/50 kind of thing. I don't know where they'll land for that piece. We think that we might know more about the yield tomorrow. And you know that that has a really direct impact on your tax rate.
Oh, I just checked, we now know it's going to Conference Committee, so.
Oh, it is.
There's no agreement for the number.
Okay. Okay, so we're hoping they make good choices about your yield as we get ready to move forward. You're gonna be warning a budget before you know it. And I think that's, that's really it in terms of, I mean, there's other stuff going on, but this is the big thing.
So I do have one other, and I wasn't able to get it to, as a student who's moved, a request for them to finish out the school year at Enesberg Elementary School as presently a fourth grader that has moved into, just moved out of town. Parents know they would transport. So I just got the letter from the parent asking for her daughter to be allowed to finish the school year out in fourth grade. But in the letter, she's also requested to attend Enesberg Elementary for fifth grade and through middle school.
I think you have some past practice that you can refer to in your decision about this.
And I think in the past, I know as an administrator, I brought to those requests to finish the year out. And if it's like two weeks left, I've brought them to, because we just get it. But with it being May 14th, and we have exactly a month, a little less than one. But, but yeah, in the past, a whole year or three hasn't.
Right. I would ask you, you're gonna be creating policy for your, the ERUUSD around school choice for elementary. In the absence of that policy, that is probably not something you want to take up as starting to make decisions about educating non-resident students. The law tells you that you're responsible for educating your resident students. So until you have a policy that addresses elementary school choice, I would not recommend that piece. Would you speak on the finishing of the year, or no? You have passed, you have in. That's all I have to prove, yeah, at this point. I think that makes logical sense.
Right.
Is it, can I ask, is that community that the family has moved to within the supervisory union?
It is, but it's not.
Within your side?
It's not Richford's side.
Okay. Okay. So that'll get addressed in policy?
Exactly.
Okay.
So do you relay it to the parent that that's, needs to be?
Yeah, I just need to hear from you if you would approve her to be here for the end of the year. And then I'll, you know, I would share that we're not, we wouldn't go further than that, because, you know, there's a policy development going on as we go into next year for any of those future classes.
In motion or just?
I think you can just, well, yeah.
Probably a motion.
Yeah, make a motion to finish the year.
Oh, make it, a student finishing at elementary school.
One second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
The last thing on my agenda is the, just an ERUUSD board update. So Polly and Rick are your representatives on the Transitional Board for the Enesberg-Richford UUSD. So they have been working hard on budgets. Their job is to present the elected board with a budget proposal, and then the elected board will vote on a budget proposal. They've also been working hard at looking at your, the default articles of agreement that were assigned to Enesberg-Richford UUSD. And they are making some proposed amendments to those articles of agreement. And they will present that to the elected board. You have four seats, all are not opposed. So on your ballot, it's going to be Rick and Polly, Pam, and Kevin. So they're likely gonna be presenting those articles and that budget to themselves at our next meeting. So I just wanted to give a reminder that your Board seat election is next Tuesday, May 21st, from 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. You're gonna be voting on representatives from both communities when you go to vote. So you'll see, you'll see names on both sides, and you'll be asked to vote on both of those. Right after that meeting, I think it's May 22nd, we're gonna propose to Polly, and we were gonna propose to Rick. No, I think we already have on this side, sorry. We have a meeting scheduled so that the new elected board will come together. They'll do their reorganization that next day, and they'll take a look at the budget. They'll take a look at those articles of agreement. And then we're anticipating that they will likely be ready to warn that budget, because they have a very short turnaround in order to be able to meet the warning period to get a budget vote before July 1st. So there is an informational meeting for the Board seat election that will happen on Monday, May 20th at?
21st.
Six.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's 6:00 o'clock at Richford High School. And then you'll, for the June 15th. And then you'll, for the June twenty-seventh year is what we're hoping we'll have for, for a budget vote. You'll have informational meetings in both of those communities before that budget vote. It makes good sense to, to give both of your communities the opportunity to come out and ask questions about the budget. In terms of the transition process, we've been working pretty hard in our office to prepare for this shift. Morgan and the staff downstairs have been doing a lot of the heavy lifting around transitions for benefits and transitions, well, for the other side of the merge, for bringing a new school into our supervisory union. There's a lot of, a lot of details going on. So, just want to encourage you all to continue to be patient with us. We're trying to, to not drop any balls, but there's a lot going on right now. So, we are, you know, there are some pieces that are still kind of out there in the wind. The judge is still going to hear, he's going to hear arguments on the Athens case for the three pieces that he has not thrown out. So, that hasn't happened yet. And he, in terms of the legislature, I am not expecting anything major is going to impact at this point. But we'll know with certainty as we go into next week, it seems. So, once that path gets cleared a little more, we're going to feel a little more comfortable doing some of those final details and finishing the push there. Morgan, anything you want to add to that?
Thanks.
Okay. So, at this point, I would ask the board to go into executive to discuss hiring.
I should go into executive five oh five.
Who do you want in?
You guys want in?
Did anybody second?
Yeah, nobody seconded.
I'll second.
Oh, Michael did, I'm sorry, Michael, I didn't hear you. Real picky. I think you should have Eric in for sure.
Morgan.
Maybe Jessica. And you did have Nate and Rachel on your hiring committee.
Okay.
Actually, I think that there's, maybe you just leave your principals, sorry, Amanda.
No, you're fine.
Polly, do you want to show Amy where to sign those?
Yes, I will.
Do more than one man.
You don't have to, but you're going to sign it.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah, we're in.
For the committee.
Last Wednesday to watch our construction kids sign on to their future. And then also last week was our FFA Spring Forestry. We came in first, spring forest competition first and dairy cattle judging second, milk quality third, maple competition. All that means is for those that are on the, working on that budget, you'll see that we have put money into field trips, which is really to support our CTSOs, our career technical student organizations. We've been winning more and more and we've been continually send those, sending those kids to nationals. So, we do a lot of fundraising things, but we also have to, and some of our federal grants pay for the teachers and the advisors for that, but we are going to continue to try to make sure we can send those kids to nationals. So, the one kid that we'll be sending this year is Ethan Cooley, who came in first in Skills USA. So, he'll be going to Louisville right after school.
Can you say the last name of him?
Ethan Cooley.
C-O-U-L.
M.B. And we did not have, our advisor was not available, so we are trying to piggyback him with Northwest Tech's Skills USA group, which would save us a little bit of money. And then tonight is our awards banquet at seven PM. So, I know I'll see Michael over there, but if you guys want to come and attend, there's some, a little bit of food, cookies, lemonade, iced tea. And it's everywhere from our employability awards to National Technical Honor Society induction, Career Fair Awards, program awards, and recognizing all of our employers who have our kids get trained and educated on the job. So, it's about an hour, fifteen hour and a half, but it's a pretty, it's all right.
I will say that, that was so fun, that award ceremony. It's like this little red carpet event and it is so much fun to just see the interactions with the adults and the kids and, you know, the scholarships that they get. They earned some scholarships.
There's money available, we have from the Career Fair.
It's a really awesome event.
We have ten, we had ten winners at the Career Fair down at, that was back in March twenty-eighth, I believe. So, I think we got the top prizes again for best resumes, best interviews, and just positive interaction between our students and the employers down there. And Cassa LaVoy, who's not part of that group anymore, is going to come up and present one last time because she's got to train someone new. But it is unlike other award, we invite, we invite all of our students and most of them come and not all of them get awards. So, it's, it's unlike the ones where you only invite those getting awards. We have to, it's done more, a little bit more like the Oscars where there's nominees and winners and losers. It's good to be nominated.
Yeah, exactly.
That's cool.
So, so if you can make it, would be great to have you. I do need you over and set up, so. And I think that's it. And thank you for coming for the Phil Scott Signing Day.
It was really fun.
That's really cool.
Yeah, it was nice. Oh, he was a tech center guy, so.
Yeah, that's really cool.
It was really fun to walk around with him after the signing day. Because he really just looked like he wanted to take his coat off and help the kid get the spark plug out of that car. He was all about, how, how are you going to do that? You know, I can't describe what happened with the spark plug, but he knew all about it.
Right.
And he was, he was very much into talking with the kids and pretty excited about the opportunities that he had.
For sure.
And Nate did a good job of putting the plug in for grant funding. We had a little window there.
Right, so Dustin Degree was also there and there might be some workforce development funds for us to get some money to redo that barn. So, especially if we can have some adult education going on and retrofitting that barn over there too, so. I think he said a hundred thousand dollars, Seth said two hundred and fifty, so.
We got to meet in the middle.
We got to, so somewhere in there.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. Have a good night.
You have a request from the Green Mountain, how do you say?
Football.
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 It's a soccer club, easier to say, to use the, the field this summer. May eighteenth through August third for a junior academy program on Wednesday evenings. So, this went through, the request went through the high school and pulled the policy, and the policy, because this is not a nonprofit, this falls into a third priority use request as a for-profit organization, which then triggers whether or not you want to charge for use. And the, the other thing that it triggers is that by policy, second, third priority groups will provide certificates of insurance with FNESU member districts listed. And it's just about the agrees to identify and defend school district from all damages. So, there is a request from Randy Swain Bank for a waiver on the insurance piece of it for next year. So, the, we typically get, Morgan, do you know, I think I heard from someone that it was a million dollars?
Coverage.
Coverage. Is that what your policy requires? So, I don't approve breaking policy. If it's something that you're going to consider, it has to be at this board level. So, what you're being asked to consider is, oh, consider allowing this football club to function this year without the insurance policy. He's saying that next year he will acquire the policy, but I think that it's a, it's a matter of the cost of it for this year. He's also given you language below that you could take a look at, pass it this way, and then that in terms of what the players' parents sign off on in terms of.
It's no different than any other kid going to another, a different camp.
Right, that sounds like they.
Sign the waiver.
They sign a waiver saying that they have no liability.
It doesn't stand up in court anyway?
Right.
So, I have highlighted your policy so that if you wanted to take a look at this in terms of this certificate of insurance, and then the board will have to just have a conversation about it. Eric, is there anything you want to add?
No, I mean, that's, I, I think that, that a request of this nature has to be decided, I think, at the board level because it's policy.
So, it's interesting, like the way that this reads because it says certificate of insurance with Franklin, right, listed as the insured in an amount to be determined by the superintendent. The group agrees to ident, identify and defend the school district from all damages. Like, is it and? Or would that defend?
The school from damages?
That won't.
That won't. The certificate of insurance, there's a little box that says, Morgan, you remember, additional insured. Like, they actually, that policy carries the districts as additional insured. So, that's what that's referring to.
Oh, okay. The group is that, not the group as in that? The football club.
I don't know. Well, I think the group agrees because they're holding the policy.
Oh, see, that's what I'm wondering is if they, that this reads separately, but it doesn't.
I don't think so.
Okay. Like, can you do this and not that?
I think that this is that.
Okay.
I think that it is.
Okay. What was, now, he, in the past, he's used the rec fields. Why, he doesn't want to use the rec fields anymore? Does anybody know?
I, I don't know.
I don't know.
I think he may be using both.
Oh.
So, the, right, so he does the six-on-six, right, with his boys? And then this is a different.
This is completely different, yeah.
So, then he does separate for soccer team and anyone who wants to come play really over, over the rec field.
Got you.
Some have been playing here, though. I, I don't know what.
Because he's always.
Six is gone on over here?
Some have been playing here. I don't know what league it is, but.
Because he's always sent a letter to the town asking to use the, the rec fields for soccer camps.
So, yeah, I think the, this is different than his Red Devil group.
This is a new, like, cat.
This is like, yeah.
Academy that he's starting, right?
Right, and these kids are going to, they're traveling and so. Like, our travel baseball program is coming here for a summer camp. Providing, I mean, it's more established, gym has the insurance to. This is new. Trying to get up off the ground.
So, I think that it, as a board, you have a right to choose to break policy. I would ask for you to, to decide what, what is the rationale so we can apply it to other situations as you're making your decision? I just think that's the important part to think about in this.
So, we make the Lions Club correct for the parking lot, right?
Anybody that builds out a building used farm has to get a certificate of liability.
If they're teaching yoga or anything like that, they have to provide a certificate of.
Well, we could go back a few years and some have it.
She eventually did.
She eventually did, but, right, right. We had to do a lot of twisting.
Yoga twisting?
Yes.
Yes, weightlifting, twisting, whatever it was.
I, I think you answered this, but I wasn't always paying attention. The reason being for the first year is the cost.
A bit of insurance policy.
What's that?
I said, the reason being the cost the first year.
Yes. I can guess, yeah. As soon as he sent it to me, I just forwarded it to all of you.
So, this release form, I release Green Mountain Football Club, its staff and facilities used from any responsibility and litigation. Should they receive under the supervision and care of the football? That wouldn't protect us.
I think that if you asked an attorney, anything that you sign that has something like that isn't going to hold up. Or would you disagree with that?
I would not disagree with that.
Okay. Is that a risk then, I mean? Right.
First thing they told us on the first day of business law. Waivers don't hold.
Waivers don't hold? That's so interesting. I don't know, what do you think? Precedent is a dangerous place to be. So, I think yes on the use, no on the lack of insurance.
Do they require insurance to use the rec fields?
So, what happens, so, what, it depends. If it's under rec, if, if it's rec-sponsored, then it's covered by the town insurance. If it's somebody charging, then yes, but I almost think no. When he's used it in the past, I don't think, I don't know if we've ever required. He is.
So, if it was not for profit, it would not trigger this? Because it would be considered a second priority? It's the for-profit that triggers, that you need to have?
Not necessarily, I don't think. I mean, we've always had the second priority people provide proof of insurance as well. I think, I, I can handle that. Am I wrong?
Well, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, I'm trying to name some of those seconds. We haven't, I mean, there's times.
The ones that fall in policy that says second priority would be for nonprofit groups.
Yeah. The profit groups like Philip Snyder, that Taekwondo, we've had, we have insurance documents.
But I remember when we had that other soccer club from Burlington that came. I remember requiring proof of insurance when they came, but I didn't, I just don't know about this particular one.
I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to charge for the use.
No.
I mean, Amanda, do you, have you been charging for field use? I don't, I guess I don't know that.
No, I mean, no. There hasn't been.
Nothing in your policy that's rigid about the charge part? It's, you just have to make the decision about the liability insurance.
I don't know of anything, well, I guess like AAU and stuff. Well, we don't have that here, so I haven't come across anything really.
They play here all the time. And they're supposed to be.
We have insurance.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, charging. As far as charging for like, if they use the building to come in for tournaments, like.
Yeah, we don't typically have AAU tournaments here, but practice here.
Right, but they're category too, so I wouldn't, I mean, I've had mini metro requests for practice. We don't ask, I mean, ask for the insurance, but I don't ask, we don't put a charge in there.
Right, right.
Because they're not, you know, doing it as that side profit. And I don't think the fields are listed in there anyways. The high school gym's a big cause, the.
Cafeteria is. So, what's the will of the board?
If policy was different, I'd say something different.
Just the policy?
I concur, yeah.
I'm assuming you don't want to weigh in on this?
I'll stay neutral on this.
I think that would be wise.
Okay. So, have Eric communicate on this one, could you please? Use is good, but we need to follow policy on the insurance. Okay, I'm going to hit the road.
Hit the road.
Thank you, everybody.
Don't come back no more. Oh, Mike, no, I'm, no, I'm kidding, I'm just thinking. Hey, Michael, I think you need to sign that.
Michelle.
Okay. The first one I put on here and the, the, the most important one was we're going to try once again to have, this is our third annual community barbecue social event with a carnival theme this, this year on Friday afternoon this week, May seventeenth. From four to six thirty, we'll have a, we'll have a ton of things set up for free, for, for fun, to try to do a community event for folks to come in and enjoy lots of things happening. I'm going to send this paper down the way because I forgot to include it in the board report. But I, I want to. Send this paper down the way, 'cause I forgot to include it in the board report, um, but I, I want to give a ton of credit to Joanne Allen, and also our parent group, our actions group, for trying to coordinate a lot of things that are happening this Friday afternoon. We will be kicking off the story walk on the Brownway River Trail, and if you haven't walked down there yet, you're really missing out on a beautiful place right here in town, that you can just hop off and get a little bit of, um, wonderful nature at, at any point. I'm hearing, as of today, Joanne has, uh, the author of the first book, who lives in Callis, Vermont, coming to, to kind of lead the group. Yeah, I don't know the title of the book right now, she's had so many on the list that I can't remember what it is, but it's gonna, it's cool, that we'll have a children's author here that day. Rise Vermont, it will have a bike rodeo set up, and we're, we have seventy-five free bike helmets to give out, so hopefully we'll have a lot of kiddos coming. Um, so, I know, I think you made it last year, Amy, or maybe the year before, we're seeing you at one point, but if you have young kiddos and want to come in and have some fun, we'd love to see you.
Teachers are pushing it, if I don't bring Isaac, I am the worst mom in the world.
Teachers are.
Literally. The guilt, the guilt card seems bad.
Good or bad, you might be here.
No, literally, I have to, I'm trying.
I think my granddaddy told her kid, her, like, my kid the same thing, that I have a potty, and you better bring me to this potty, so.
It's funny, my daughter just messaged me, she said, can I go to the story walk on Friday, it's four to six thirty.
Great, so we hope you have a good turnout, I think last year was around two hundred and twenty people, so we're hoping for that, so. Um, then I listed a ton of the end of the year events, but I forgot to list that we are gonna be marching in the Memorial Day Parade on May thirtieth, so that's, I think, I know the middle high school has their band as well, um, and of course, to put in there the June Dairy Day Parade, how could I forget that? So that'll be another marching event. But everything else that's listed there is coming up way too quickly, and we are in a rush here to, to be prepared for all of the things. And then I did have one action item for hiring of, uh, and I, I wasn't sure if I had it on my list, or Flynn was doing it, but, um, I, now that Mr. C is moving on to another position, I did, uh, meet with Richford Elementary School's art teacher, Jennifer Caswell, about sharing both buildings, and she is, um, very much in agreement with that. Um, it would be a point four position instead of point five, because I can get all the classes in in two full days, and she would then have time in Richford. So I'm, I guess I'm looking for the board to make a motion to offer Jennifer Caswell, um, that part-time art position at the elementary school.
Oh, my goodness.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I was a little late on that one.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rachel?
Um, I have a couple of updates, so we're, uh, gonna run summer school again for students who have incompletes at the end of the year. Right now, that's, uh, looking like one student, um, which is a really good...
That's a good, yeah, that's a good one.
And I'm hoping that that student gets everything done, and we may not even need to run it, so that is, that's the dream. We'll see how it goes. Um, and in past years, we've, we've set it up for a week, and kids come until they're done, and we've only needed, um, one or two days each year, because as soon as they realize that if they complete the learning, they can go home, then all of a sudden, they're able to do that project that has been not done since April, or in some cases, November. So, um, we have a couple upcoming end of the year events, uh, sixth grade information night is next week, that's when we invite all of our, um, incoming fifth grade families to the school, um, give them a little information about what sixth grade is like, a tour, it's kind of, um, just an overview, um, uh, our movie premiere night, our eighth graders do a really big project every year, kind of their culminating middle school project, is, um, writing, filming, starring in, directing, editing, et cetera, their own movie, and, uh, we like to invite everyone to come see the premiere of that, they're always really fun, and it's a ton of work that the kids put into them, um, and it's just a really nice celebration of learning, it's on here, it's, um, June tenth, Monday, at six P.M. They're, they're always entertaining and sometimes kind of a riot, so. Um, our last student day is on here, and then we're doing a staff in-service day on Friday, and, um, a SU in-service on Monday. Um, and I have a couple hiring updates, so, um, I have a pair retiring, Cindy Dudley, she's been at Inisburg for a long time, so we're looking, we're gonna be looking to fill that vacancy. And, uh, we interviewed a reading specialist finally, and found someone we think will be a good fit for our school, so, um, looking for, um, board approval to hire Vincent Ionico, um, and, uh, so that's one.
Okay, I'll move.
Sorry.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and then we also, I, I don't know if I need board approval for this one or not, but, um, as you know, Kelly Jarvis is also, um, leaving at the end of the school year, and we'd like to hire, offered Karen Ovitt. The position Karen's filled in many times, is a sub for, um, admin assistance around the district, and it's a great fit.
Do you know any approval?
Okay, so anyway, she's, so we'll have her. And that's what I got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Eric?
Um, so, uh, part of mine was the folks that presented at the beginning of the meeting, um, other informational stuff, I've got a big old list of dates here that are, that's in my report, um, if you don't have that, well, you got it?
Nope. Okay.
So you can have them, um, I'll, I'll send them your way, Polly.
No, I have it at home, actually, I just forgot to bring it.
Um, so the, so the only thing I really have left is personnel, uh, we did a, we've done a whole bunch of hiring. First off is the full-time art position, replacing, uh, Carly Brazard, and in that case, Brandy Yeatman, uh, one of our current special educators is going to be moving into that position. We, we don't need a motion on that, do we?
Just moving?
No, so, um, we will be looking for a special educator.
Actually, let's get a motion, 'cause she's an SE employee.
Right.
Oh.
Okay.
We'll move.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, we have hired, um, it's actually not Benash, but I can't, it's like, Ben...
Bannicky.
Bannicky, Bannicky, I kept saying, saying Benash, A.J. Benash is our, is our chorus, uh, teacher.
He don't know how to say it. We're hoping to...
Mr. B.
Well, I've been saying Benash, like, all the way through, and then I heard it was Bannicky today. Um, so, yes, so we have hired for Rachel Sherman's replacement.
Nice. Move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we have hired, um, Courtney Rascott to, um, replace Jen Gaffney, um, and, uh, yeah, that's it.
Move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and then just today, um, I had a candidate for social studies accept the position, uh, ninth grade, uh, her name is Anna Wadlington. I told Jamie I don't want to bring this forward yet, I guess it's... It's not on here.
Morgans are acting supervisor.
He's trying to talk to you.
Alright, so, uh, Anna Wad- Wadlington for social study, replacing Mary Ann.
Move.
Second.
On favor? Uh, yeah, on favor.
Wonderful.
Good lesson.
And that's it, uh, the, the point five art position, we are not replacing, um, and then you heard about Joe Marshall, so that's, that's what we have right now.
Did I need a motion on Joe, or did we already do it? I was thinking she said we needed a motion.
I think they already did it.
Okay.
We did it through Lynn.
Okay.
Think?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Um, that's all I have.
Morgan? Thank you, Eric.
Reports in your packet, no real update there, still don't have allowable tuition numbers from the state, and told they're waiting on census data from one district, and they're telling which one. The only thing that I don't, I think Lynn mentioned in her section of their personnel is that you have a few teachers who have not yet signed their contract and are, um, on an extension, those are up on Thursday, so at that point, we may be hiring for, um, some additional positions. That's all I got?
Really?
Fucking no.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any board business?
I don't think so.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
You too. What's it like to write, Michael?